I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, well, good evening. Welcome, everybody. We have a lot of guests here today, so we'll try to get right along to the meeting. This is a unique meeting in that every two years when, it's actually, every two years there's an election, so we just had one April, and we have new board members coming on. So, part of that is the swearing-in process and then electing new officers and so on and so forth. So, you all have the joy of being here for that process, so welcome. So, the first item is the, declare the results of the April 4th election, or April 4th, 2017, school board election. So, Lake County Clerk canvassed the votes following the April 4th, 2017 consolidated election. In the abstract, the votes were certified April 20th, 2017. The following candidates were elected to the Warren Township High School's Board of Education: John Anderson, Janita Wilson, Paul Scholes, and Jim Walls. So, that being said, we have two leaving board members. Again, thank you very much, both of you, for your time and your service. And they are officially board members until this swearing-in ceremony starts, which is starting now. Oh, yeah, I kind of skipped over that. Approval of the agenda, good point. So, we do have a change to the personnel items. We're adding items 202 through 205, which will be read into the agenda, read into the motion. So, we will, we'll do that when the time comes. So, if there's no other changes, then I move we approve the agenda as amended. And so, the roll call will be... Kathryn?
Yes.
Jim Walls? Mike Mundt?
Yes.
John Anderson, yes. Barb Conway?
Yes.
Liz Biondi?
Yes.
Very good. So, the agenda is amended.
Can I have one question? Do you have the date and the time of the canvassing of the vote?
April 20th, it was certified.
April 20th?
Yep.
Does it give a timestamp on the time?
It does not.
How did you get it? Just out of curiosity.
I got this piece of paper from Mary, or Mary.
Jean?
Jean. And I did email the state, and they said it was final, the election was final. So, I emailed them the 20th, it was last, it was last week, the 18th, 19th, about the 20th. I sent them an email because it was still coming up as not final on the website. And then, I did go, emailed them, and they did send me one back and said that it was final. They didn't give me the time or anything else, but, and then, I did check the thing, it is.
And just moving forward in two years, you know, I'm always about technicality.
Oh, really?
This is technically a reorganization meeting, so in two years, I think the agenda should state that because the reorganization is statutory.
Right.
And I think for, in the spirit of transparency, anybody who wants to be a part of that, you know, and watch this transition and reorganization, it would make it very clear on that agenda. Because when I looked at the agenda, it just looks as if it's a regular board meeting and doesn't identify it as the reorganization meeting.
It says board reorganizations.
Pardon?
It says board reorganizations.
I didn't, I didn't see it on the public.
Number five.
I didn't see it on the public one.
Okay, fine, whatever. Okay. Are you guys ready for? Is he ready? Mr. Drake has now joined the meeting. He is not, wasn't able to be with us, so he is joining us via telephone. Tom?
John, hi, everybody.
Hi, Tom.
Everybody say hi to Tom.
Hi, Tom.
Hello, everybody.
Okay, thanks, thanks for dialing in, Tom. Okay, now, we'll start with the oath of office.
All right, thank you. Again, I'm Steve Richard from the Law Office of Hodges-Louisey. Our firm has served as general counsel for the school district for a few decades, and it's really an honor for me, as a partner of my firm, to be able to swear in the newly-elected board members. So, if you would kindly raise your right hand and repeat after me. I.
I.
John Anderson.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will faithfully discharge the duties.
That I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of the office of member of the Board of Education.
Of the office of member of the Board of Education.
Of Warren Township High School District 121.
Of Warren Township High School District 121.
In accordance with the Constitution of the United States.
In accordance with the Constitution of the United States.
The laws of the State of Illinois.
The laws of the State of Illinois.
The Constitution of the State of Illinois.
The Constitution of the State of Illinois.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
I further swear or affirm that.
I further swear or affirm that.
I shall respect taxpayer interests.
I shall respect taxpayer interests.
By serving as a faithful protector of the school district's assets.
By serving as a faithful protector of the school district's assets.
I shall encourage and respect.
I shall encourage and respect.
The free expression of opinion by my fellow board members.
The free expression of opinions by my fellow board members.
And others who seek a hearing before the board.
And others who seek a hearing before the board.
While respecting the privacy of students and employees.
While respecting the privacy of students and employees.
I shall recognize.
I shall recognize.
That a board member has no legal authority as an individual.
That a board member has no legal authority as an individual.
And that decisions can be made only by a majority vote.
That decisions can only be made by a majority vote.
At a public board meeting.
At a public board meeting.
And.
And.
I shall abide by majority decisions of the board.
I shall abide by majority decisions of the board.
While retaining the right to seek changes.
While retaining the right to seek changes.
In such decisions.
In such decisions.
Through ethical and constructive channels.
Through ethical and constructive channels.
Thank you, you may take your seat.
Thank you. That hurts.
You were real close.
It's kind of hard to hear anyway, so. Alrighty.
Congratulations, everybody.
Thank you. Okay. So, now, the board reorganization will come, is the next part. So, as part of that, we have to appoint a president pro tem, because as of now, we don't have a president. So, um, so I would move that, who do you want to be the, do you want to be the?
You can be the president.
Well, then.
So, I'll move the board appoint John Anderson as president pro tem, who is a board member, has been elected and served president of the WTHS Board of Education.
Roll call. Time, Jean. Fall down, we don't want that. Roll calling on the president pro tem.
Oh.
All right.
Mundt? Seconded by Conway. Very good.
Walls?
Yes.
Yes.
Uh, yes.
Mrs. Conway?
Yes.
And Mr. Mundt?
Yes.
We have the secretary pro tem, so I move we appoint Barb Conway as secretary pro tem until a board member has been elected to serve as secretary of the WTHS Board of Education.
Second.
Roll call.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Um.
We forget him over there in the box.
Drake?
Yes.
Good answer.
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, the next item on the agenda is the election of the new board president. So. Yes.
I'll move the board approve the election of Thomas Drake, president of the Warren Township High School's Board of Education, effective April 25th, 2017.
Second.
Not yet, not yet, not yet.
Roll call.
A motion to nominate Mr. Drake as president, Mr. Mundt?
That is correct.
Absolutely, yes.
Mrs. Conway?
Yes.
Mrs. Wilson?
Yes.
Mr. Drake?
Yes.
Absolutely, yes.
And Mr. Mundt?
Yes.
Congratulations, Tom.
Thank you, everybody.
Now, we elect the vice president.
I move the board approve the election of Mike Mundt, Michael Mundt as vice president of Warren Township Board of Education, effective April 25th, 2017.
Roll call. Uh, yes.
Mr. Mundt?
Yes.
Mr. Drake?
Yes.
Walls?
Yes.
And Mrs. Conway?
Yes.
I have six yes, motion carries.
And the election for secretary, so I move the board approve the election of Barb Conway as secretary of the Warren Township High School's School Board of Education, effective April 25th, 2017.
Second.
Roll call.
I have a motion to nominate Barb Conway as secretary, motion by Janita Wilson and seconded by Mr. Mundt.
Mr. Walls?
Yes.
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 And Mr. Mundt?
Yes.
Yes.
I have six yes, motion carries.
Okay, so that, the board has been reorganized, so I will say, good night, everyone.
Thank you, John.
No problem. I'll move to the end.
Tom?
Ten years, you guys.
Yeah, long time.
Congratulations, John.
Hey, good job.
Did a great job.
It's been a pleasure, thank you.
Tom, you're going to be staying with us for the rest of the meeting?
Uh, just briefly, I just wanted to say, thank you guys for placing your trust in me. I'm going to do the best job I can. I have some big jo, big shoes to fill. I think John has done just a phenomenal job. But since I am remote tonight, I'd like to turn the gavel over to our vice president, Mike Mundt, to run the rest of the meeting. Really appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you, Tom.
Thanks, Tom.
Thank you. I'm going to be signing off now.
Thank you.
All right, bye.
So, in the absence of our newly-elected board president, I'll be running the rest of the meeting tonight. Moving on, recognitions.
We are fortunate that we have a number of our art students here tonight, and Ms. Knutson and Mr. Odo are here as well, and so, we've got three groups of students, and that's why a number of our art students are here, and I think we're going to bring them up in order. But before we do that.
Rocko, Kate, if you could come forward, I'm going to try to get some slides up here.
Do we have swearing?
But you can swear.
We can swear, but not swearing.
Hi, everyone. First of all, we, I'm Rocko Odo, it's Kate Knutson, and we are by far the longest-tenured teachers in the art department. I think 18 years we've been teaching together, and this has been a real significant year. I'd like to start just by thanking the board, Dr. Algrim and the mayor, Jean Love, over there, that, to allow us to come here and present our students, we're very proud of our students and what they've accomplished, and we've had three really big events recently that we'd like to share with you, and they're very poignant moments in our art department. This past week, we hosted the North Suburban Conference Art Festival here in the cafeteria. We had 10 students that were recognized as all-conference students, and I'd like to recognize them first, if I could do that. Aubrey Chen, if you guys can come on up here, if you see her.
And hide in the back, that's out.
Yep. That'd be great, just come right up here and, and, that's right. Katie Olzuski. You could probably walk down the hall and see all of these pieces on display right now for our Live Arts Festival, which is Friday night, if you get a chance. Not here, but I would like to recognize her, is Olga Sabkiv. And here, Vanna Figaroa is here tonight. Unable to attend tonight, it was Olivia Lippert, she's not here, but, and then Cameron Corchini is not able to make it tonight. But Madison Zini is here. Madison had a really amazing sculpture that was recognized in the conference art festival. Simone Sagowski. Very talented artist. Olivia Noah, I don't believe is here, but Connor Brooks is the final student from the conference art festival, all-conference students. Congratulations, you guys. Yes, that's right, Aubrey Chen, actually, we had, we had eight professional artists here presenting, and they went throughout the show to pick an Artist's Choice Award, and Aubrey won the Artist's Choice Award. So, there's Aubrey. Giant blue ribbon for that. Second, the second real important event that's happened this semester was the, if you guys want to have a seat, you may. Yeah, sure.
The North Suburban Conference, by the way, always does a great job of having the art festival, and so, I just wanted to say a little shout-out to the whole art department and the institution here, it was a wonderful event, and it was awesome, and it was great free flow for all the eight conference schools to be able to see all the artwork of all of our conference students. It's a wonderful, clever event, really powerful, if you guys would want to.
Thank you, thank you. It was an incredible event, you're right, and the artwork, I thought our artwork stood up tall next to every school, and we're very proud of our students. The second event that we wanted to share tonight was the Illinois High School Art Exhibition, the state art exhibition down in Chicago. It's, unfortunately, it's down by Comiskey Park instead of by Wrigley, but it's still the state art show.
Still Chicago, come on now.
Still Chicago. But there were five students that we, that earned an all-state honor, and one student earned the top prize in that show, named by Blick Arts, and I'll share it with you. But the first student here is Gina Bernardini, who's down there coaching the cheerleading tryouts right now, she's sprinted down here and is all out of breath. I don't think, they've already, they've already gotten, so we don't, yes.
Just making sure.
Oh, there they are.
I thought those bright orange.
I wonder what those bright orange envelopes were for. So, Gina Bernardini, Megan Zymas.
Oh, one.
She got two. Just right here.
Whoa, you want two, write down those.
Is Megan here today? Yes, there she is, I thought I saw you. Aubrey Chen. Get used to Aubrey, she's only a sophomore. Sammy Avila, Sammy. I'm sorry. It's cardio, it's cardio day for you. And A.J. Gozen. Congratulations to these, these students. Just, just to let you know, I was down at that art exhibition, and Aubrey, Aubrey had a graphite drawing, which is on display down in our show, Live Arts, if you get a chance to see it, it's a graphite drawing, it's an amazing drawing, and you'll know when you see it which one it is, but she won the Blick Arts Top Award. They're not, they only picked one piece out of the show from all over the state of Illinois, and the representative from Blick Arts gave a speech about that piece, and he said that, that the, what separated this piece from everything else, and he went around his office and asked everyone to comment on it, was that, that it was a narrative piece that really spoke to everyone that looked at it, it had, there was a lot of emotion in there, and they were really impressed with her work, and the craftsmanship's unbelievable. So, if you get a chance to see it, that was a real proud moment for Warren Township High School. Congratulations, you guys. The last, the last event, I think, I think we sent this out to everybody in the district, it's called the Memory Project, and it was the best eight minutes I've spent at Warren in my career, and this was spearheaded by Kate Knutson, it was really, just makes me so proud of our department, you know, she did this, and saw, saw the forest through the trees, so to speak, and got our students involved in this project. The Memory Project is, it's really an amazing project, it's a, it's a worldwide project to create portraits for youth that are in really terrible, living in terrible conditions. And the, the video we got back was a thank-you video from Syria, and these were students that were living in just horrendous conditions, and I think this teacher in Wisconsin started this project, and he sends out, takes, gets portraits, sends them to schools, it's really organized, and a clear plastic sheet, we give them to the students. Our students make a piece of art based on that portrait and send it back, and we get a video to see the kids revealing their portrait, and the emotion, I mean, first of all, the emotion watching it, we both were, I mean, I'm tearing up four times that day, watched showing all my classes, and, you know, it was just a real tear-jerker to see the happiness on these students, these are all refugees, you know, in refugee camps, and to see the happiness that this brought them, we had five students that participated, and we have more doing it right now. It's, it was amazing, it's just, one of the quotes that came back from us was that, I think this is really cool, that finally, a video was made of the portraits being hand-delivered to the children in refugee camps. It showed children living in dire circumstances, happy, smiling, and truly grateful for this amazing gift, and these ladies use their artistic talents to bring joy to these children, proving the power that art can have on the human spirit, which is why I think we teach it in public school and pass it on to our children, and I think this is the greatest example, so, thank you, Kate, and thank you to the five students, and those five students are Gina Bernardini, these are AP students, right, are they, or not necessarily? Not all of them, okay. Nahih Kim, who could not make it tonight. They all are. And Talia Green, who could not make it tonight, but Hunter Birch is here, and Emma Barovka is here, right? Yes. So, they're portraits, and we, the videos, they send thank-you videos back, we've, the first one we got was, was to Gina, but we, did we get the, the other? Yeah, Digiball. Yeah, yeah, right, so it's, if you get a chance to watch it, it's really an amazing thing, so, so thank you for letting us share this with you and for recognizing these great students, we're really proud of them. One last thing, Friday night is the Live Arts Festival, it is a fantastic event, we, we invite all of our feeder districts to bring artwork in, there's 25 elementary pieces from each elementary feeder school, and, and then, we have all of our artwork up here, so, it is, is very well represented in our, for our community, and it's a really, it's become a really big community event, and I hope you get a chance to stop by and see the energy and the excitement of live art, it's, it's art that's living the whole night, and it's really a cool, all-fine arts experience, so.
Time's to start?
Six to nine.
Six to nine here?
Six to nine here.
Okay.
Live arts here, yes. Thank you.
Thank you.
This is a portion of the meeting where, if you would like to go, you're welcome, or you can certainly stay around and hang out with us, and, thank you very, oh, can you see it on our face?
Thanks for being here.
Thank you.
Not hiding anymore, Greg.
See you.
Okay. Anybody signed in?
I have the book.
Oh, you have the book, okay, I'm sorry, I didn't know you had it, not bad. I'll shut up.
Help is always appreciated. All right, moving right along. As a reception of visitors, no one has signed in, is there anybody here that would like their three minutes of fame? Last 10 years? In the president's report, there's an announcement of the 2016-17 and the 17-18 board meeting schedule. Per the Illinois School Code, every public body shall give public notice of the schedule of regular meetings at the beginning of each calendar or fiscal year, and shall, and shall state the regular dates, times, places of such meetings. The schedule of regular board meetings, dates, is available on our webpage, and a copy is attached inside your board packets. Board committee meetings, which meet on a regular basis, shall also be published at the beginning of the fiscal year or, and/or the calendar year. Warren's board committees do not usually meet on a regular basis, but meet only as needed, therefore, we are not required to publish a committee meeting schedule. When there is a need for a board committee to meet, then a notice will be posted at least 48 hours prior to the meeting, following the requirements of the Open Meetings Act. Board committee assignments, board members should contact the board president, Tom Drake, with the committees that they would like to serve on for the 17-18 school year. A list of the board committees will be given to the board before the next meeting. Public notice served. President's report. Public content meetings, for announcement for the 16-17, 17-18 board meeting schedules, meetings will generally start at 6:30 PM, PM, with an executive session in the board conference room at the district office, followed by an open session at 7:30 PM in the Allman Campus Gallery. Warren Township High School District Office and Allman campuses are located at 3409 Zero Allman Road, being noticed, are posted 48 hours prior to the meeting as required. Any reports?
We did have, our April 11th meeting, as well as a meeting in the following week, was a, some discussion about our recommended renewal rates for the 17-18 school year. Talked about some of the items that are, from an insurance committee point of view, maybe things that will give us some. Costs and some items that, that seem to be high cost for us right now, uh, in terms of, uh, plan. And we talked about a meeting, uh, at the end of May, at the very end of May. And look at possibility of some changes in the future. Also had the Discipline Student Handbook Committee on April 18th. That, uh, is a final meeting of a couple of, uh, meetings that we have where we kind of review the final recommended changes, uh, for our handbook. For agenda later. Of the general notion of those changes, um, that's for the board. And, uh, so at that meeting, we just confirm that those are indeed the changes. Looking at, and there are still some things in the Parent Teacher, uh, the Parent Student Handbook in regards to, uh, specific staff and dates, things that. Forward, uh, before they obviously go with the registration. Having printed deadline. Uh, we have a number of items for the board, uh, including our normal attendance enrollment, uh, discipline and staffing report. So that's for the, the board members. Also have a treasure.
Uh, March 2017 Treasures Report, uh, for, uh. Mrs. Wilson, our new board member, um, I've indicated in the Treasury Report, I, I will do a narrative. I will do charting. I will do a, a self comparative document, certain documents to review. Ones that you should really focus on, or ones that have operating funds in our title, was our day-to-day operations. At this point, uh, for the first nine months of the year, operating revenue was around 9.6%. Has declined, uh, $2.9 million from last year. Budgeted a 3% decline in revenue. Expenditures are up, uh, about 7.5% and we budgeted a 1.1% increase in. On the 21st of April, we did receive our September categorical, A, for, uh, regular transportation. Special Ed transportation and two categories of, uh, special ed, uh, funding. We have now received our private facility, uh, September payment. So, uh, we, we have last week indicated we would get our September installment by the end of April. Other payments.
It would still be booked into this year, this fiscal year?
Uh, if we receive them by. Scheduled for. Have as much time.
One more, are they called up or they, or they're too short?
Well, they're three. Or will be three short. They're too short right now. Last year they were all paid. So, uh, we're updated on, uh, anything we hear from the state on, uh.
You, uh, as a reminder to, uh, board and, uh, people in the audience as well, we do on Saturday night, uh, uh, from 6 to 9 at our O'Plane Campus. Excited about the recognition. Excellence here. We also wanted to remind, uh, we got a reminder today, so I, uh, wanted to make sure, just because it was timely. Project lead. Always really excited.
They're gonna be there tomorrow as well, right? Tonight, because they leave at 8:30, I think, tonight, is what they said, so. Tomorrow will be a good day.
Thank you. Uh, moving into new business.
Now, we put together a, a quick little blurb for the board on, uh, the increase. The only increase that we're recommending is the $20 parking increase. I had also given to the board a kind of a sketch of a, a schedule of fee increases over the next handful of years. That's not, the board's not voting on tonight, but what we tried to do was put moderate increases in every four years in a different category so that families wouldn't feel increases, uh, all at once. And depending on which of those items, they all, obviously, most families deal with the registration fee. But the parking, the athletics, and the activity fee, depending on what their families, uh, participate in, they wouldn't necessarily feel increases if they come all at once. But for this year, we're just recommending the 425 for registration, 320 for parking. Athletics still staying at 225 and activities staying at 40.
Move to approve the student fees. 2017, 20.
Second.
Motion by Walls, second by Anderson, roll call.
Conway?
Yes.
Um, Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
Mrs. Wilson?
Yes.
Mr. Walls?
Yes.
Yes. Next, we have the approval of the Student Parent Handbook Changes for the 2017, 18 school year.
Created for, uh, the board, a memo of just a summary of changes that, uh, we've given to the board. And for those of you that, uh, have participated in some of the committee work, uh, you know, we went through and spent a little more time on some of our hate crime language and our, uh, student conduct. Well, there's some of our. Behaviors to allow some flexibility, uh, under Senate Bill 100, but also make sure that, uh, uh, we create a strong enough, uh, statement for our students that they know that safety and security are. That, that was the biggest, uh, change over the course of the year that, uh, we've added, as, as well as just, uh, some additional language changes and updates.
Second.
Motion by Conway, second by Anderson, roll call.
Walls?
Yes.
Yes.
Uh, yes.
Conway?
Yes.
Yes.
I, yes.
Next, we have the approval of roster of hearing officers.
Uh, yeah, for the board, we're just trying to get some, uh, clarity on our process used in terms of the administration using a, a roster of potential hearing officers if we need one for a student, uh, expulsion hearing or a hearing of another kind. At this point in time, we've just found three individuals who have interest in doing hearings for us. They're all former administrators who dealt with student discipline and are, have been through hearings, are very familiar with the process and so. So at least to start with, we wanted to have some names by which we could draw from. We'll also bring an updated list to the board, update roster to the board, or at least any. Yeah, they, some of, uh, we, generally, so we've had, we generally think, and part of it's out of our control too, because they kind of charge, right? And so we've had, we've done a little bit where we think that we've had, uh, really low fees charged to us in the past. And in our last expulsion, there was question about, you know, the fact that it was four times, four times more what it was before. We think probably in terms of where we're zeroing in on it, we're looking at probably about $550 as being the cost. The question last time, we had to do it about a thousand dollars. But by the same token, the, that's, it may be out of our control to a degree because the hearing officers themselves do charges what they will and they won't all necessarily charge the same amount for the service, based on where they're coming from and what they've done in the past. So our, when we, when we set.
As we know what it is. I mean, we should know what it is in advance. I mean, what their, what their base fee is, right? So, so Gina, you know what, what happened? We, we had a hearing officer did all of our expulsions and she's passed away rather suddenly. Then we got caught in a kind of a, a whipsaw at the last minute. We didn't have anybody else appointed, which we're supposed to appoint them. So now, in case anybody's busy and, and they're time sensitive, it'd be within 10 days. Now we have to appoint several, which is why we're going through this process now, just so we're, we have more than one. So in case we get in a bind again, we have somebody else appointed. We don't have to have a meeting at the last minute to appoint someone.
Getting a few more wouldn't be bad for us. To make sure we. There's not necessarily any specific qualification, other than someone who's familiar with the hearing process and due process. And there's a number of professions that obviously are familiar with the.
Questions or discussion?
Move to approve the roster of hearing officers for the district.
Second.
Motion by Anderson, second by Conway, roll call.
Mr. Walls?
Yes.
Conway?
Yes.
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 I, yes.
Uh, the approval of the summer workers for maintenance, maintenance and technology for 2017.
Here we do budget funds, uh, for summer student workers and these are typically college students. Or graduate. Educational technology and maintenance. They have submitted their request. I'm asking them to, uh, reduce their request. So we can, uh, reduce that budget line by 15%. Uh, so we're asking, uh, approval to hire additional summer workers at a cost not to.
That's good. Move to approve hiring summer workers for maintenance and technology as presented.
Second. Motion by Anderson, second by Munda.
Conway?
Yes.
Walls?
Yes.
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 I, yes.
The approval of carpeting, RFP.
Uh, these ones, uh, are for, uh, carpet replacement. And, uh, as people in the board is aware, we have a standing committee of, uh, building principals, associate principals, main facility managers, not.
All of them myself, and we review the list of capital projects and replacements in the district. Five-year cycle, we meet. Building administration is asking for some two projects for 17, 18 fiscal year. Uh, the one is the parking lot is surfacing, which the board did approve that last board meeting. That was about $80,000. Capital budget for 17, 18 and the amount of $750,000, which leaves.
$670,000 for carpet replacement.
Uh, the carpet replacement, uh, base bid included the first floor hallways at Almond and the second floor hallways at O'Plane plus entryway carpet.
She brought the sand, what we do in those at the district office. Uh, they're, uh, very nice material. And if you get five, I'd play off this.
We had the meeting, last meeting?
Yes, he did. Five, five or so choosers, so, um, anyway, we received. They're, they're very nice. Yeah. Unburst in there, but. Uh, we did receive, uh, three, three, uh, bids. Uh, the, and like I said, the base bid was first floor almond, second floor O'Plane, uh, walk-off entry areas at O'Plane. The first alternate, number one, is the, uh, lower hallway at Almond. And the third, the second alternate is the main office at O'Plane. So the recommendation from the administration is accepting base bid and alternate one, uh, for, uh, with Vortex Commercial Flooring. And that total bid would be $63,007. Um, we're not recommending alternate two because in the future, there may be some reconfiguration. So. Base bid. Cost of $63,000. Questions that I can?
So, the motion needs to be. I move to approve the carpeting RFP and award Vortex Commercial Flooring, the base bid of $449,642, and alternate one in the amount of $153,405.
Motion by Anderson, second by Walls, roll call.
Conway?
Yes.
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 Yes. Approval of the hiring recommendations per Exhibit A. Uh, those were also noted that that was a.
Yeah, I'll make the. I'll make the motion, but, so Gina, um, when you get the personnel recommendations, which is attached to your document there and you read that, those are the people that have been approved to hire? Well, their names are, are in the mo- in the, uh, posted agenda. So when you hire someone, didn't used to be this way, now you have to actually put their name in the agenda as it's posted for the public. So we've added a few extra people on there. So then what you have, then when you read the motion, we have to read their names into the motion. Because we can read the other ones who are part of your, um, board docs. We can read those as posted because they're posted publicly, but these, since they're new, they have to be read in. So when you read the motion, I have to say, I move to approve Exhibit A Recommendations 196 through 201 as posted and 201 Rebecca Hoppenen intermittent FMLA. 203 Sarah Rydel, uh, leave of absence unpaid. 204 Zachary Pagan, new hire, uh, promotion. And Justin Van. Schweek, new hire.
Second. By Anderson, second by Munda, roll call.
Conway?
Yes.
Mr. Walls?
Yes.
Wilson?
Yes.
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 The approval of the payment of bills for 42517.
Well, I'd like to have the Hodges and Louisey check taken out of here.
Well, we can certainly do that.
Just for old time's sake. Just kidding.
Motion, please.
Stop laughing. Okay. I move to approve the payment of the bills for 42517 in the amount of $500,700, $501,744 and .414 cents. Says .414 on my.
.414.
I'm very precise.
Motion by Anderson? By Conway?
Yes.
Mr. Walls?
Yes.
Mrs. Conway?
Yes.
Mrs. Wilson?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Munda?
Yes.
IBS.
We have the approval of the regular meeting minutes and executive session minutes of April 11, 2017.
I move to approve the regular meeting minutes and executive session minutes, April 11, 2017.
Second, sorry.
Motion by Conway, second by Anderson, roll call.
Walls?
Yes.
Mrs. Wilson?
I abstain.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mrs. Conway?
Yes.
And Mr. Munda?
Yes.
I get four yeses, one extension, what do you hear?
Very good. At this time, the board will be moving into closing the executive session. Board members will reconvene down at the board office. Need a motion to adjourn?
I move we adjourn the meeting.
Second.
Motion by Anderson, second by Conway, roll call. Barb Conway?
Yes.
Yes.
Mike Munda? Jim Walls?
Yes.
Janita Wilson?
Yes.
John Anderson? Yes. Thank you, everybody.